Can mad if somebody say something that says on the bottom of my screen, my speaker's not working? Check it.
You're breaking up a little bit. I hear you, but you're breaking up. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. My speaker's working. Am I still breaking up?
No, you're better now. Thanks for checking.
Thanks.
So I'm running by your clock, one minute and counting.
We are a moment or two away, not quite a minute. Bear with us. Probably, oh, correction, we're about thirty seconds behind. So we'll stand by. I'll give you a fifteen second counter. Okay, Mr. Chair, we have fifteen seconds, please.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, October eighth, two thousand twenty regular meeting of the Planning Commission. This is a meeting by teleconference only. I'll go ahead and ask the Commission Secretary to call roll.
Thank you, Chair Lee Zak. Commissioner Pickett.
Here.
Commissioner Strongman.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Vice Chair Chris Selig.
Here.
And Chair Lee Zak.
Here.
For the record, Commissioner Ward is absent. We do have six members and may conduct business.
Thank you, Commission Secretary. As stated earlier, this is a meeting by teleconference only. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph M. Brown Act. Teleconference locations are not open to the public. To provide a live remote public comment, please join the Zoom teleconference meeting. The meeting ID and password are, meeting ID is nine eight five zero two eight zero four one nine zero. And the password is three four eight six four one. If you wish to make a public comment during the public comment period, please use the raise hand feature to alert our staff and commissioners that you have a public comment you'd like to make. And please wait for your turn. And once brought into the meeting, state your name for the record, and you'd have three minutes to make your remarks. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start the meeting. First item, section on the meeting agenda is the consent calendar. Commission Secretary, are there any consent calendar items?
There are no consent calendar items now.
Okay, then we'll move on to the public communications section. This portion of the meeting is reserved for common items that are not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements or questions posed, request clarification for the items to the public. The Secretary, is there anyone in the public wishing to make public comment?
Let me check with my colleagues to see if anyone on the attendee list is raising their hand. Just a moment, please. Looks as though no one on the attendee list has raised a hand to make a comment at this portion. I would, for the benefit of the Commission and the public, we did receive one general public comment received earlier today. I did forward that along to the Planning Commission for their benefit, and we will post that if we have not already. That comment will be posted online on the public meeting page.
Okay, thank you for that. Seeing no other public comments for this portion, we'll go ahead and close the general public comment section, move into the public hearings section of the agenda. The first item on the agenda, or the only item on tonight's public hearing agenda is the Community Benefits Program Specific Plan and Zoning Ordinance Amendment. And I'll go ahead and turn this over to staff, Mr. Andrew Smith, for a staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair Lee Zak, Commissioners. My name is Andy Smith. I'm head of long range and transportation planning here for the city. And I am pleased to announce that I fit into at least some of my work clothes still, which is good. So tonight, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen because it wouldn't be a Planning Commission meeting without PowerPoint. Host disabled participant screen sharing. Can somebody please enable that for me?
Please stand by.
Should be good.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Let me rearrange a few things here on my screen. So, um, tonight we have an item that is, uh, it's one where really there's more background than actual action, I would say. As can be seen on your screen, this is a, we're taking a recommendation to the City Council for a zoning ordinance amendment and an amendment to the north downtown specific plan in relation to a community benefits program that is under consideration by the City Council. There we go. Because I believe it's been more than two years, actually, since we've had any substantive discussion regarding community benefits with this commission. And in fact, a number of the Commissioners were here at that time for this. So I want to give a little bit of background as to just what exactly I'm talking about when I speak of community benefits or community benefits program. This is something where the stereotypical, it's a win-win approach, but that's actually true. This is something where the community gets something and developers can get something out of, basically new development in relation to changes in the zoning regulations. In short and summary, community benefits program is one whereby, in exchange for increases in height, FAR and/or density, developers provide a community benefit, some sort of a developer provided benefit to the community as a whole. So there is, you know, a bit of an exchange, I suppose you could say. But it is something that really can benefit both sides of the equation. And this is something that was first brought to bear in Walnut Creek under the recently adopted, somewhat recently adopted, west and north downtown specific plans. Both, one, the west was adopted in twenty eighteen and north in twenty nineteen. Both of these specific plans actually incorporate community benefits as a basis for the zoning that was ultimately implemented as part of these specific plans. And in the way that actually functions, what was actually adopted and what currently resides in our zoning ordinance is essentially certain properties were designated by either the zoning district regulations themselves or the zoning maps. There are areas where you can get, as I mentioned, extra height, FAR, FAR floor area ratio and/or density in exchange for community benefits. And the process for that right now is that the developer has to apply for what's called a planned development permit. It's very similar to a planned development rezoning, except for that it's called a permit rather than a rezoning. And the, the submittal requirements for a PDP, a PD permit is very similar. It's basically, it is a development application, full design and landscape plans. It's an extensive hearing process. You have to go to the Design Review Commission, the Planning Commission, and ultimately the City Council for approval of the planned development permit. And the process with regard to community benefits that's in the code right now is it's a purely negotiation-based process, basically something where the developer or property owner makes an offer to the city, says, hey, I'd like to offer you this benefit and in exchange, I'd like to have this height, FAR and density. And really, the only guidance that currently exists as to specific community benefits are two lists contained within, one within each of the two specific plans where there are lists of potential community benefits specific to those plan areas. So that's what's on the books right now and has been since about twenty eighteen, no, twenty nineteen, I want to say, twenty eighteen. I'm sorry, I forget. Time has really gone strange these last six months, I will say. Anyway, with those on the books, of course, Sacramento does what Sacramento, Sacramento did what Sacramento does, and they further tinkered with state laws. And as you probably already well know, there was a host of new state housing legislation that went into effect at the beginning of the year that had some, imposed some pretty significant changes on the approvals process for developments that include residential component or that are entirely residential. And as it relates to the community benefits process that we have right now on the books here in Walnut Creek, there are some potential conflicts, shall we say, or complications. Some of the changes to state law include, for example, a limit on the number of hearings or public meetings that can be had or that can be required for a residential or mixed-use development, no more than five hearings. Requirement for objective design standards for residential or mixed-use projects rather than discretionary review. And also, there are increasingly generous density bonus provisions for projects that include an affordable housing component. So how that, how that interplays with our current regulations for community benefits is that if a developer wants to use our existing regulations to go through the community, to provide a community benefit in exchange for increased height density and/or FAR, they're looking at a process that is lengthier, much more lengthy in time, carries with it additional risk and a fair bit of uncertainty compared to a sometimes almost by right process that would be required for a residential project otherwise. And of course, there are significant additional costs involved in that, the, just the, the terms of permitting, you know, the permit fees, of course, to the city, but also the cost of developing plans before even knowing if they're going to get a certain, say, height limit or density. And as well, you know, time equals money. And so there are, is that. So with that in mind, we, and with council direction, decided to reevaluate the community benefits process that we have here in Walnut Creek. And in fact, in the case of the, when the City Council adopted the current regulations, they did direct staff to start to prepare a new process that would be adopted by a separate council resolution. It would be a city council document essentially to be adopted separate from these specific plans at a later date. And that's what we've been working on since. When looking at the community benefits program, there's basically, there's three basic tenets that you really want to have in order to have a successful program. You have to have a certain level of flexibility for the developers to be able to basically find something that's going to work for them, for their project, and they'll pencil out. Also looking for a program with a certain level of certainty. Now, it's going to be for the, for the developer having some, you know, some level of certainty so that they know when they're going in, at least have an idea of, you know, what the city's looking for and what they can hope to achieve. And then for the community, they want to have some certainty as to what they can expect to see or receive from the developers as part of, you know, new construction projects. What kind of community benefits can be expected? And then lastly, of course, like anything we do, it has to be implementable. So the way that community benefits programs have played out, and they're somewhat new thing, to be honest with you in city planning. So not every city, in fact, most cities don't have something like this. But generally, there's really kind of three types of programs that you tend to see. There's the formula-based program where it's a points scoring type thing where certain community benefits are awarded a certain number of points that you can then exchange for your development increases. There's the standards-based option where it's, hey, here's a community benefit. If you give us this, you'll get that. And then there's the negotiation-based system, the let's make a deal program, which is what we currently have. And so we've, like I said, we've been working with the City Council. And last May, we actually took, and the City Council did approve a draft framework for the new community benefits program that actually includes all three of these options. There's the points-based option, which is that formula, site-specific option, we're calling, for the standards-based method, and the flexible option, which is that negotiation method, basically what we have today. So the points-based option. This is, the, at the basis of this option, there's this table that you can see on your screen right now, probably, that has a list of different benefit types and then has columns with a points score associated with each. And so, you know, there's the large, medium, and then there's the add-on, which is if you're providing a four-point or a two-point bonus benefit, I mean, in that given category, you can do a little bit more to get an additional two points. And, and the way this then works is the developer, you know, they take those points and they exchange them for those development bonuses. And so those bonuses are given in increments of height, density, and FAR. There are set increments that are built into the, the framework and would be included in the actual program adopted by the City Council. And larger properties require more points per bonus. Makes sense, of course, because if you're getting a height increase, for example, across an acre, you should probably be providing a larger benefit than if you're getting a height increase over ten thousand square feet. And the, in addition to the illustrative examples of potential benefits that are included in this table, which is, by the way, an attachment to the staff report, the City Council directed that we add into the program an option for developers to make financial contributions to a community benefits fund, which that fund could then be used to build community benefits. Main reason for that was two reasons. One is it does give a simple way out, so to speak, for the developer. And, you know, easy, obviously, to include that in your pro forma. But then also, it, you know, there are some, some benefits, like bike lanes, for example. Actually, we don't have bike lanes listed at the moment in there, but class four cycle tracks or other things in the public right-of-way. Often, you really can't do those piecemeal. You can't do streetscape improvements where you're, you know, changing the number of lanes on a street, for example, just parcel by parcel. And so this is an option where is we collect money from the developers as part of approving community benefits, that money can be pooled to then do the improvement across an entire block when the time is right. And community benefits or community benefit requests through this points-based option would go to the Planning Commission for consideration and approval. The site-specific option is much simpler to explain. Basically, there'd be a list of specific projects. The, the classic example is GMona Plaza, the illustration on the screen right now, from the north downtown specific plan, where either they're, they're known specific projects or, more importantly perhaps, projects that can only occur in one spot. And, and this is, I think, really the main reason why I chose GMona Plaza as the example here. There's only, GMona Plaza is only going to go on GMona. And the owner of what is now Honda, the Honda site, is going to be the only developer that's going to be able to provide GMona Plaza because it actually would extend onto their property. So they would have the option of using the site-specific option to basically get up to the full potential amount of development bonuses possible in exchange for providing GMona Plaza. And these types of requests as well go to the Planning Commission. And then there's the flexible option, which is really just kind of what we have right now, except not through a planned development permit process. It would be a separate, like a pre-application, if you will, where, you know, the developer makes an offer for community benefit and a request for associated increases in height density and/or FAR. And this would also include an option for a financial contribution. And the reason why there are options for financial contributions, both in the points-based system and in this one, is that there are some situations, you know, perhaps if it's a very small property or there's just other unique factors to a specific piece of property where it really doesn't make financial sense for a developer to provide the amount of money required to get the necessary number of points under the points-based option, and they can successfully make that case to, to the City Council. And, well, there I said, yeah, provides flexibility for special circumstances. And as I mentioned before, these types of bonuses would be approved by the City Council. So that negotiation process would happen at council level. Also, what was reviewed by the City Council back in May and given direction to move forward with this was to do a relatively minor amendment to the north downtown specific plan, specifically with regard to you counting affordable housing as a community benefit. As I mentioned before, both of these specific plans have lists of potential community benefits. West downtown, top of the list, affordable housing. But then there's a note saying, go use the state affordable housing density bonus laws. So basically takes that out of this process, out of the community benefits process, and instead directs developers to use existing state laws, which are then, of course, implemented through our local zoning ordinance, to get density bonuses. The north downtown specific plan doesn't say that. So the two specific plans are in disagreement. And following our recommendation, the City Council did decide, or directed us to go forward with an amendment to change, to take that affordable housing provision out of the north downtown specific plan, make it match the west downtown specific plan. And there's actually some very good reasons. I know it sounds really bad to say we're taking away affordable housing, but in fact, both of these plan areas have many housing opportunities. There was a significant amount of upzoning that happened throughout both of these plan areas. And importantly, doing this avoids double counting. Under the north downtown specific plan, theoretically, somebody, a developer could propose affordable housing, say, hey, this is my community benefit, affordable housing. They get their bonuses and then turn around and use the state law with the same housing, double counting it to get more bonuses. And so this is really an attempt to avoid double counting, but also to make sure that we actually see a variety of types of community benefits. If the double counting is allowed, obviously, that's what probably most developers are going to do. They'll just do affordable housing every time, that minimum amount. And then we would not see any of the other community benefits that are really necessary in order to implement the vision of the specific plans. I mentioned in the staff report, I don't have it here on the slide, but it's important to note that both specific plans call for a fair amount of public infrastructure improvements that the city could not fund on its own. And without the community benefits program to supplement that, we will not be able to achieve the vision of either of those specific plans. So that's a long way of saying that's the background. Now here's the shorter part, what is before the Commission tonight, which is the zoning ordinance amendments, as well as then the specific plan amendments, making a recommendation to the City Council for the amendments. And much of, almost everything that I've just spent the past some amount of time telling you, I don't have a clock in front of me here, and that one there is unplugged. But what we've, what I've talked about so far tonight is really going to be almost entirely contained within the community benefits program adopted by the City Council by a separate resolution. That's really, that's their, their purview. So what's left in the zoning ordinance are just two things. One, we need to, well, let me just go through the list here. Basically, it's the things needed to implement this program, the, the enabling legislation, if you will. One is that we're creating a new entitlement type, type, a CBA, a community benefit agreement. So, you know, we have design review, we've got CUPs, use permits, we've got home occupation permits. Well, now we have or would have community benefit agreements as a, as an entitlement type. And we also have to amend several of the base zones to take out the current requirement that says, current regulation that says you do community benefits with a planned development permit, and instead have it say, you do community benefits with a community benefit agreement. Those zoning districts where we need to change the language, I mentioned, there are several, and they are all the districts that are, well, not all, but almost all the districts that are located either within the north or west downtown specific plan areas. At the moment, no, there are no provisions for community benefit bonuses outside of these two plan areas. And it would take further amendments to the zoning ordinance to, to expand those programs. Additionally, meaning to make some amendments to the administrative regulations. This is really the boring nuts and bolts in the, in the back of the zoning ordinance, if you will, adding CBAs to the standard permit review processes, requiring a separate CBA application prior to the development application. So basically, this is, this is actually an important, is an important nuance, I'll say. Some of that recent housing legislation, this from recent, but not just this last year, there are two particular, this SB three thirty that is the one, actually, that one did go into effect this year. That's the one that limits the number of hearings. And then there's SB thirty-five that, for affordable housing projects, essentially makes it a ministerial review process. And by having the community benefits review, A, it's limited just to how much height density FAR are you looking for and what are you providing as a community benefit? Having that separate and prior to the actual development application helps us avoid any entanglement with either of those two laws. It doesn't count as one of the five hearings that is the limit for projects that have a housing component because we're not actually looking at the development. We're literally just looking at establishing the zoning standards, the building envelope for the property. And likewise, we don't have to worry about having a discretionary process for, let's say, for what ultimately turns into an affordable housing project that takes advantage of SB thirty-five. So that's a key distinction that's built into this. A lot of the, as I mentioned before, much of what I've described of the process itself, though, would be included in that future City Council adopted program. Findings, guidelines, review criteria and the like, those would be contained in the draft program that would be considered and adopted by the City Council. Also, one interesting final change, updating the term chief of planning. So your Commission Secretary, Ethan Bindernagle, he's the planning manager. That title back in the day was called chief of planning, antiquated term. Several years ago, there was an ordinance that went through that, among other things, removed that term, but unfortunately, it missed a number of instances throughout the zoning ordinance and actually the building regulations as well. And one of the sections that it missed is a section that we are now proposing be amended for the community benefits process. So decided, let's just fix this once and for all. So you will find at the very bottom of the draft ordinance, a removal and replacement of all instances of chief of planning, replacing it with planning manager. So just wanted, that's why that's there. So the last thing is the north downtown specific plan. I think I already described what we're looking to do there, removing the affordable housing from a list of community benefits because those bonuses are really available through state law already. And actually, I should mention that right now, there's a limit of maximum thirty-five percent bonus possible under state law, an automatic, we have ways of, through a discretionary process, granting more than that. But there's, in terms of the automatic density bonus increase is possible under state law. Right now, there's a thirty-five percent cap on that. The governor just signed into law within the last few days, a new law that'll increase that maximum to fifty percent. So, you know, this really just kind of strengthens the argument that we're really not getting in the way of affordable housing by removing this provision from north downtown. State laws got that covered. So for tonight, our recommended action is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution, making a recommendation to the City Council to adopt the zoning ordinance amendments and to adopt the amendments to the north downtown specific plan. Our next steps following that would be to then to prepare the draft community benefits program itself, based on that City Council-approved framework. We'll refine the list of community benefits for the City Council to con- Based on that city council approved framework, we'll refine the list of community benefits for the city council to consider. And then ultimately, they would be adopting that program. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Smith. Do any of the commissioners have questions of Andy? Scroll up and down here. Hold on, there we go. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. I'm curious if the, with the negotiation based approvals here, is the, there's not a strict one to one correspondence between what you provide and what you get in return. Are there any guidelines or kind of criteria that are indicated? Or is it simply, tell us what you'll do and we'll tell you what we'll do for you?
So the, the current regulations that we have right now, the only guidance are the list of potential community benefits that are contained in each of the two specific plans. Otherwise, it's what I casually refer to as the let's make a deal option. And it really is basically that. The applicant makes an offer for the city council's consideration. The proposed program that we're working on with the city council at the moment. What we discussed in May surrounding that is that that points based system where there's the list, the table and point values and really would be getting into the nitty gritty as to, okay, how many linear feet of bike lane or bike trails you need for certain increase in height and whatnot. That table could be used as a starting point for kind of a benchmark for a negotiation based offer coming through the process. Also, we're looking at, we, this is what we discussed with the city council, that those, those negotiation based applications, they would be providing some essentially financial, not financial information, but some cost information and valuation information of, you know, what it is that they're proposing. You know, what's the actual value in a, in a dollar sense of the benefit that they're proposing? And then we would look at, just using standard tables out of the building code for building valuation. Approximately how much additional benefit, financial benefit, which is the value of the structure would be, could be gained from the increases that they're requesting. But that, that process is intentionally loose, I will say. Or it intentionally provides a maximum amount of flexibility. Because those are going to be the kind of the one offs, if you will. And it allows the city council the ability to make policy based decisions as to really what's appropriate on a case by case.
Thank you. The other question I have is I like the idea of having a separate approval for the community benefits agreement. So it's not counted against the five meeting limit. Does, is that process of coming up with the agreement sufficiently different enough that the five meeting limit for that approval does, or that agreement does not apply? In other words, do you get, do you get the five meetings for approval of the project plus five additional meetings for the agreement? Or do you get five meetings for the final approval, but an unlimited number for the agreement?
It's the latter of the two. The agreement itself is not a development permit. It's, it's not a permit at all. Actually, it's just, it's referred to as an entitlement. And importantly, the submittal requirements for those would really be limited to, okay, what property are you looking at? How much of a bonus do you want in terms of basically what do you want as your height limit and floor ratio limit and maximum density? And, you know, where is the property? What are you providing? It doesn't actually go into you, we specifically do not ask for plans or anything like that. And we're looking at, we were actually looking at using, there's a pre-application or preliminary hearing process for general plan amendments that's currently on the books, where there's some language in there that we're looking at, at borrowing. It basically says, you know, that process is if you're applying for a GPA, we can take you early preliminary basis to the city council and they can tell us, just based on just a preliminary application. Either, no, this is no good, just don't do it, denied right off the bat. Or go ahead and go through the review process. We'll see you when you're done with that. They cannot approve it. There's, there's no provision, no way for them to approve it at that preliminary stage. And there's language in the code that says that that direction, if given to, okay, continue processing this application cannot be construed as an improvement or, I mean, as an approval or endorsement of the project itself. And so we'd be using similar language here in the document that we're, we're working with the city council on.
If I may interject quickly, and I would be remiss if I didn't offer this point of clarification. Andy mentioned earlier that, you know, in coming forth with a, with a project or in a request for an increase in development potential, that you, you know, what height do you need? I want to be very clear. What height do you need with the measure eight, within the measure eight height limits? I think I would be remiss if I didn't clarify that measure eight still applies through the community process. I want that clearly stated on the record in case there's any question.
I, you know, every time I talk about this with Ethan, I even make sure to say myself, now, of course, we're not going over measure A. And I've told him that those two terms go hand in hand and look when I forgot. But that is absolutely true. Measure A is sacrosanct. We cannot exceed that through this process. And in fact, it's, the zoning ordinance, the rules we already have on the books right now establish the numeric limits for height density and F A R, above which you need to provide community benefits. And then it provides that further cap that, you know, thou shall not pass. So there, there's already limits built in and we're completely fine under measure A.
It occurred to me that the negotiation part of the, the application could take a long time depending on, it could be a fairly major benefit that they're trying to provide. And a five meeting limit might be problematic for some of those things. But I'm glad to hear that it doesn't apply there.
Okay, other commissioner questions of staff? Commissioner Pickett.
Yeah, just on the chart that shows the points. Community benefit example, I'm looking at cultural arts. It's the second one on there. I just want to make sure I understand that. If you, it says four, four points if you provide or for each four hundred square feet of interior floor area. So if you have eight hundred square feet, that's eight points. Is that how that works? So you can, it's just proportional to the
Under that illustrative example, yes. I will tell you that this table that's included as attachment to the draft framework. That was the, the staff report that went with that to council back in May said left and right, this is just, these are just illustrative examples, illustrative examples. And so, and you'll even see there's like right below that streetscape improvements to be determined. This was, at the time, we were not looking and we were not ready to even seek input on the benefits themselves, what ratios, things like that. It was just these were basically thrown in as, here's the type of stuff we could probably expect to see, but we're going to come back to you, city council to work this out. And I will tell you that what I'm in the process of right now is working to establish some sort of a benchmark, a cost benchmark, if you will. A number of these improvements are, for example, a number of these improvements are really public works improvements. You know, street stuff, you know, roads, trails, bike lanes, bike paths, things of that nature. Utility undergrounding. And so I've been working with our public works engineering division to get approximate costs, typical costs, I should say for these, so that using that as a method to try to make sure that four points under one category is, it costs the developer about as much as four points in another category. That said, there will be some benefit types, or there could be some benefit types if the city council chooses to that are, it'd be monetarily cheaper to achieve the same number of points. Because the city council would be making a policy based decision saying, we really want X. You know, through the specific plan process for west downtown, one of the things that came out was wanting some shopping store or grocery stores. And, you know, that's something also where, and similar to a cultural arts facility, it's not just the one time construction costs, there's the ongoing operating costs. And those things you really can't quantify as you could for how much does it cost to put in a curb gutter sidewalk? And, and so, you know, there, the, the table, the ideas that the, it'd be a mishmash of stuff that yeah, we can definitely, you know, there's the build it and you're done. And those will all cost the same for the same number of points roughly. And then there's the build it and operate it in perpetuity. And those would be viewed a little differently. And that's, that's going to be some, some work we'll be doing with the city council.
So, so conceptually, I understand that. So, so the numbers are not, are not meaningful at this point. They're just illustrative.
Just illustrative.
So, another example, the utility underground. So if I, in this example, if I were a developer and I came in and was going to underground four hundred feet of utilities, I would get four hundred, four points. If I were doing eight hundred feet of utilities underground, I'd get eight points.
Yes.
This sample, okay.
Yes.
Me, if I can jump on that example as well, because I want to be clarified for the commission and we've clarified this for the council as well. Any requirement, frontage improvement requirement or other such, for example, undergrounding required otherwise through the discretionary approval, approval process would still be required, like I say, along a project frontage. These are for community benefits above and beyond what would already normally be required under a standard set of conditions of approval for design review, for a use permit or whatnot. So this is in addition to. So if you're already doing five hundred feet worth of undergrounding, two hundred feet per side on a corner site, let's say, this would be in addition to that.
Okay, that was helpful. Thank you. That was my other question.
Yeah, any other commissioner questions? Okay, I got just a couple of probably similar or related questions. So with respect to the, the recommendation that the commission would be making tonight. These are just to implement certain amendments to various planning documents that would allow for the council to create a framework in the future. So the staff is bringing to the commission a work that has not even really been determined. It's sort of illustrative. And we're supposed to make a recommendation for these changes so that this can go forward to the council without actually knowing specifically what staff is recommending. Is that right?
Almost. The, the attachment to the draft framework, that actually has already gone to the city council and they have given it their blessing. And so then the actual program will be built upon. In fact, I've already started working on it. It'll be, it's being built upon this framework, just adding, you know, some additional process, coming up with some of the findings and criteria. But then the real work is actually making these illustrative examples, actual real tables, numbers and the like. But the, the, the mech, the basics of the mechanism, the framework, that they already have given their blessing. And so the zoning ordinance amendments and the minor amendments of the north downtown specific plan that is before you tonight is, they are meant to implement the program that will be based off of this framework.
And, and so the program that you're talking about, the detail that, that mechanically makes this work is something that staff would prepare and submit to the council in the future for their approval. And then that's in some other section that could be periodically amended if for some reason costs changed or, or there was a feeling of certain items. You know, perhaps the, the city had a different, you know, need for, for certain, certain things more than others and they changed their priorities. We could shift and award more points and things like that. So today's recommendation is to approve, if you would, the, the, the larger scale amendments to the code to allow this to happen. And then the detail will happen at a later date and then the detail can be amended as necessary in the future.
Yes, exactly. And, and actually, you bring up a good point that city council specifically requested that the community benefits program be something they adopt by resolution rather than an ordinance. Resolutions are much easier to amend. That way, it's a much more nimble document. You know, the, the example was given by one of the council members that, you know, once we've seen enough pocket parts, we can take those off the list. And that's it'd be a simple thing to do, relatively simple thing to do when it's in the resolution, rather than actually codifying it by ordinance into the municipal code.
Okay, well, that's, that's helpful in, in helping me understand what we're trying to achieve tonight. Other questions, you know, that I, I kind of had related to that, that I suppose are more food for thought and that's you know, if, if a developer contributes into the community benefit fund and then another developer comes along and uses some of those funds to build a particular type of improvement. Does that therefore become public funds? And is it therefore a prevailing wage project? I mean, it, the
So the
That would affect the, the cost and the value of certain improvements that one might provide.
Yeah, absolutely. This is something actually we looked into. So first of all, the, the financial contributions to a community development fund, that or community benefit fund, I should say, that fund will be a city fund. And so essentially, they'll be writing a check to the city that goes into this restricted fund that, that would be spent at the city council's discretion for constructing improvements. With regard to prevailing wage, most of the community benefits are the, that we've talked about thus far with the city council are things that would be occurring in the public right of way and would be publicly owned facilities. And therefore, as has been explained to me, would be generally subject to the prevailing wage regulations. Regardless of who built it. And so that, it, it's going to be expensive either way, I guess, is a way of, of saying that.
I, I, I think you should do some additional research into that. Because that would limit to some degree how those funds can be used.
Yes.
And the interest that anyone might have in providing those improvements. And, and I say that only because in our work on both of these specific plans, it seems to me that many of these larger scale public improvements are, are critical and key to achieving the goals of those specific plans. And unfortunately, I felt like there just wasn't a really detailed financing plan that would help developers feel comfortable moving forward with those, those developments without being stuck with, you know, large scale infrastructure that wouldn't be solely their benefit. So I'm going to move on to the third, another point that you mentioned, which I think was an important one, and that has to do with measure A. This is a huge concern and I, I understand where we are with this. If a community benefit and some benefit through that, through some bonus doesn't allow you to go higher than the measure A limit. Why does the state bonus law allow for that? Wouldn't they be similar? And wouldn't it be not allowed by law to go higher than the measure A? Irrespective of where your bonus came from?
So what's, what's the key importance is the language contained within measure A. And where the laws are coming from. Measure A specifically says that the city cannot approve anything above the height limits that were in place essentially in nineteen eighty five. The affordable housing density bonus with its related exceptions and, and entitlements, that's through state law which supersedes local regulation. We're required to do that under state law. There's a number of things throughout zoning, even within our existing zoning ordinance where state law has actually superseded and allows more than anything the city could approve on its own.
Okay, that's, that's a very helpful detail. Thank you for that clarification. And that makes it, I think, even more important that we remove those affordable housing sections from the specific plan. So that we allow for those projects under very limited application to do what you just described, because it seems to me that some of the specific plan densities lend themselves better to, to that application. So that, that's very helpful. So those, those are all the questions I think I had for now. Are there any other questions before we open this up to general public comment? Okay, so seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. And we will turn back to you, commission secretary. We're now open to public comment. Are there any, anyone in the public who would like to comment on this?
Let me double check with my colleagues just a moment. It does not appear that anyone has raised their hand to make a comment on the site.
Okay, well, with that, we'll close the public comment. And we will now turn back to the commission for consideration. Any last questions you might have of staff, any comments you have or to make a resolution or motion for resolution or two? Any commissioner would like to step up?
I'll just make a quick comment. I, I think we're heading in the right direction here. I like the more, higher level of objectivity applied to this. I think it'll make the process better for developers. I think we'll get more definitive benefits from, from development in the city. So I like the way it's going. Obviously, this is kind of an interim step, there's a lot, a lot more to go. I do have a question about the resolution. It's a little different format than I think I've seen before. It's basically a resolution with a decision by the city council, but you're asking us to fill in a blank or something. It looks like on the top of page, the bottom of page two, the top of page three, there's some blanks in there and then, how's this resolution going to work? Says the decision is based upon testimony, the city council does this.
Before I let you answer that, Andy, I think what I understood from my questioning earlier was that really all we're doing, we're not, we're only making a recommendation. So our motion to approve some resolution is a resolution of recommendation. And in and of itself is not an action item other than to say that the recommendation was made on this date because that's required because of the type of planning ordinances and, and amendments that are being made. So Andy, I'll let you jump on top.
Yes, no, that, that is correct. The, the municipal code requires a written recommendation from the planning commission to the city council anytime there is a request to amend the zoning ordinance or a specific plan. And so that's what we're here tonight, is simply looking for a recommendation to the city council for them to then take action and adopting the amendments.
So the, the resolution that we're, we're approving fulfills the written portion of the recommendation statement as to us just making a recommendation which we might on other items?
Correct. So it's recommending that the, that the city council adopt the draft amendments to the specific plan contained in exhibit A and the, and the draft ordinance amendments contained in exhibit B. And those, so that as, there's attachment one, and then there's attachment one exhibit A, attachment one exhibit B. And, and the attachment one itself is the planning commission resolution saying, we're recommending adopt exhibit A and adopt exhibit B.
So, so there is really only one resolution of recommendation? And in doing so, the two exhibits handle the two sections of, of code, the one being a specific plan amendment, the other being a zoning ordinance amendment?
Correct.
Okay, clear as mud. So it, any other general comments before we move forward? You know, I'll, I'll make one last one before a motion and that is, you know, I struggle with this process. I, I'm not sure that, that this process really yields much. I, I find that our code is already so challenging without being able to, to go taller and do a few other things that, that, that we're, we're creating rules that will rarely if ever be, be adopted. But I do appreciate and agree with Commissioner Pickett's comment. And that is, at least it's better than the system we have now. And it's certainly more user-friendly given the new state laws. And anything that we can do to encourage the work in the latest specific plans, I think is beneficial, even though I'm, I'm a little skeptical. So with that huge endorsement, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the resolution, draft resolution, providing a recommendation to city council, including exhibit A for the draft amendments to the north downtown specific plan and exhibit B, draft amendments to the Wana Creek zoning ordinance.
I'll second.
Commission secretary?
A motion and a second, so I'll call the role, Chair Lezak.
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Strongman.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
And vice chair Kerselik.
Well, I'd really like to keep the chief of planning title, but I'll vote yes anyway.
Noted. The eyes have it six zero, thank you.
Okay, so having worked through the public hearing section, we'll go ahead and close the public hearings portion of our agenda and we'll move on to the item on our agenda tonight, which is the commission considerations. And I'll turn to the commission secretary. Are there any commission considerations for this evening?
There aren't none this evening, Chair.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the commission member and staff reports or announcements. I'll open that up to the entire group. Does anyone have a, a order or announcements that they would like to make? Okay, seeing none, we will move to adjournment and adjourn at 7:54 PM. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.